Good evening, everybody. This is the Public Safety Committee Legislative Oversight 19-0059, monthly crime stats for the Police Department. I am Councilman Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Vice Chair Councilman Burnett. We have Councilwoman Sneed and Councilwoman McCray, as well as Councilman Pinkett and the Council President Scott. And let's jump right into the presentation.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My team and I have provided you with a slide deck that updates you on where we are with compliance with our consent decree, with crime, with public integrity. So I'd like to start this portion of our presentation with some great news about our implementation of the consent decree. The department implemented the new use of force policies on November 24th. These are the first major policies to be implemented as a result of the consent decree and represent a major step forward for the BPD's reforms. This suite of policies provide guidance to our officers on how-to on such things as de-escalation techniques, use of firearms, serious incident response team, use of force reporting, review and assessment, non-uniform policing standards, use of force, OC spray, emergency vehicle operation and pursuit policy, and K-9 procedures. This is a huge accomplishment for the department and represents a true collaborative effort with the residents of the city. As you know, before we could implement these policies, we had to go through robust public process. We had to write new policies with the help of the DOJ and monitoring team and provide multiple opportunities for community feedback. We had to develop new written curriculum that incorporated the principles of adult learning and community feedback. The policies in the curriculum had to be approved by the Department of Justice and the monitoring teams. Then, we had to train every member of the department. One thing that's important to note is that we polled members after we delivered the training, and 97% of the personnel who attended the use of force training rated it as quality, higher quality than previous years, of the previous use of force training. That's important because consistently providing engaging, thorough and clear training will be instrumental in changing the culture within the department and arming the members with the confidence they need to engage in being proactive in constitutional policing. Policy 708, rape and sexual assault, will help and go live next week. Policy rollout includes e-learning training and was focused on trauma-informed, victim-centered response with an officer-focused, offender-focused investigation. The draft staffing plan and draft community policing plan will be available for a 30-day public comment in December. E-learning for stops, searches, and arrests is available for public comment until December 2nd. An in-class for stops, searches, and arrests curriculum is now available for public comment until December 21st. The department is developing a retention plan which is currently open for a second round of public comment, and the public comment period ends today. Moving on to crime, my staff is available for you to go through all the latest crime statistics and public integrity statistics as requested. We've updated the slide deck based on last month's requests from the council, and over the last few months, we've been deliberate and strategic and focused on initiating high-impact arrests while also addressing various types of crime that negatively impact our residents' ability to feel safe and enjoy their communities. And so we've achieved great progress on a number of fronts, but we're still not satisfied with where we are. We can and we will do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I turn it over to my colleagues for questions, I've heard, we've heard rumors and it was reported, I've seen it online also, that you had stated, or you allegedly stated, that it would take seven to eight years to complete the crime plan as well as for us to see reductions in crime. Obviously, from all of our conversations and hearings, I think we all agree that that, hopefully, is not correct and it needs to happen sooner. So if you can just address those comments, if you've heard, you know...
I've heard it, and I absolutely did not say that. As a matter of fact, I corrected that on a number of radio talk shows. It was on a radio talk show where a couple of TV stations were filming, and I was asked two questions, and I was very deliberate in telling the reporter, "It's very interesting that you asked two distinct questions." Your questions were, "How long did it take in New Orleans?", and then, "How long will it take here?". And then, my answer was, "I don't know about here, but in New Orleans, this is what happened", and I went on to explain how when that mayor was elected in 2010 and then built and launched the program, a comprehensive violence reduction program that launched in 2012, and then, under my predecessor, and then I was hired as the chief in 2014, that we really began to see major reductions in violent crime. Though we saw a increase in murder and decrease in shootings my first year, it was opposite the second year, and in my third year, which was that mayor's seventh year, we began to see reductions in both murders and shootings, and then again in his eighth year. And that was what I was saying, which was very irresponsibly reported and then even further repeated over and over again. But that's actually what I said.
Thank you for clarifying. So, how long, how long should it take to implement the crime plan? And when should we start seeing different reductions in the categories that we've until now have seen increases in?
So, we are already seeing reductions in all the major crime categories with exceptions of homicides and shootings, which are obviously the most important things because they involve human life. But they happen by, in two ways. They happen by acts of premeditation where the perpetrators seek out the person they want to harm, or acts of passion, crimes of passion where two people get into it, one becomes violent, and one, if not both, attack one another. And that's how they both happen. And so, we are working now with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to bring back the focus deterrence model where we can deal with more than just enforcement, but rather prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, and reentry, which are the core issues that cause people to either have a pathway away from crime and/or can decide better and not have a life of crime. And in addition to enforcement, that's the capacity that we are building in the department and within city government right now, and that does not exist here at the moment. But those are the things that we're looking to do, which is to change the culture in the community and affect those root cause issues that make people make those decisions of why they carry guns and why they use guns, as opposed to just catching the person with the gun. And so, we want to do that also, but those are things that we're working on, and it does, we don't know how long it is going to take. What we can say is that we are fixing and building capacity in this department every single day to get better. As you've heard us say today, every single day, we're getting a little bit better in fixing our department and increasing our capacity, both with technology and in our human capital, to make us better with professional development and teaching officers how to be compliant with the consent decree, and all of the above. So, we are hoping that we will see results right away, but what we know is that this problem has been here for decades, and what we're doing is changing a culture of policing in an agency and then hoping to change the culture of violence in the city. Policy creation is easy, but culture change is extremely difficult, and that's what we're working to do. I absolutely did not say it would take seven to eight years, but it will take time to change culture of why people make those bad decisions. That's what we're working on, but that's a collective, that's a collective body of work with police and community and academics and faith-based and for-profits, non-for-profits, all of us working together.
Thank you. And so, just one last thing on that note, with, as it pertains to shootings and homicides, we've seen that a lot of the perpetrators of those, of shootings and homicides are repeat offenders. It's not the first time, and so, I think, and what we've been saying in this committee since, since you got here really, is that the focus really needs to be on clearing these cases. And so, I have seen those numbers shifting a little bit. Is there a way we can get an update on what the clearance rates are in both shootings and homicides?
Yes, we can.
So, for our, good evening, Colonel Briscoe, Chief of Detectives. For our homicide number, our clearance rate is 33.8% for our homicide.
And for shootings, it's around 19%.
Those are both things, both areas we want to and are working to improve on. It is about clearing cases. It is about holding people accountable. It is about, by doing that, it is about preventing people from committing those offenses in the future. And that's how we bring down and save people from becoming further victims. But it does come with a requirement that citizens participate with us. We had a number of shootings last week where the people were actually shot and would not even speak to us about being shot. Some even told us they weren't shot, and we were looking at them being shot. So, it does require all of us working together. But those are things that our department is working, we're working to improve every single day.
Okay, thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. And as you know, I believe there's nothing more pressing in Baltimore than the violence that we see on the streets.
Yes.
But I also, like you, believe that we can simultaneously deal with the immediate violence and rebuild a police department and restructure and look at crime in a comprehensive way. But today, I want to focus just on, on the immediacy, because as of today, we were at like 3:11 and 7:05 for non-fatal shootings, which we know is unacceptable. And first, I want to go back to some, some follow-ups from, from last month, the questions that we asked you guys. So you know that, for me, gun arrests and gun arrests of VROs or ARIs is like the most, one of the most important stats for me. So, that's a question, and you guys gave the numbers to say, of the 2,574 gun arrests from the period, combined 18 and 19, 672 of those arrests were VROs. However, 430 of them were from 2018, and only 242 for this year, which is a 44% decrease. And actually, on the information that you guys sent back to us, every single police district has a decrease in arrests of, gun arrests of VROs or ARIs. Can we talk about what we're doing? Because we know who these people are, we know what they're doing, we know where they are, we know their schedule like clockwork. And if we know and have all this information, I'm having a tough time understanding how we are not able to have the impact by arresting them if we know that they're committing crimes with guns in our city.
Well, first of all, some of it, we do know, and, but when arresting a person for a gun, we have to observe the crime being committed, and we actually have to be there to observe that being committed, and we can't just arrest them because we think they're carrying a gun. We'll have to actually demonstrate that we had reasonable suspicion to stop them that evolved into probable cause for the arrest. So, those are things we're working on, but we're also working on equipping our officers with the, with the knowledge, the competence, and confidence to be able to go out and engage and do it in a very constitutional way, so that they, like I said, have competence and confidence in doing that, and recognizing what those reasonable suspicion character traits look like so that they can justifiably make those approaches and stops. Those are things we're retooling our department to do. Yes, we've seen a decrease in the number of arrests, but some of, some of the activity and the outcomes have decreased also. It's our capacity. We're working to build that back.
So, just a follow-up for that. So, I know that in the past, we've kept this list of the most violent offenders and the people that we know are responsible for the majority of the violence that happens in the city. My guess is that that hasn't changed, right?
Good evening. That has not changed. And just to update you, our current number year-to-date, because we polled the numbers before we came, was 270 ARI members that we've arrested with, for handgun violations thus far this year. That has not changed. We still focus on what is that 1% of the population that we know are committing these crimes and is adding to our violence and our problems.
So, thank you, and thank you for that, Colonel. So, can, I'm not expecting you guys to have the answer to this today. So, of that 278, can you guys do a, and I'll follow up for Nexima, tell us how many guns were recovered in that arrest, right? Where there's just one gun, where there's multiple people in the car, and, you know, no one admits that it's their gun, so everyone gets charged? Like, those kind of numbers are critically important to me as well, because these are the folks that the citizens call us about every day, right? They call us and even say who their nicknames are, and why is it that every time this person, you know, they just, nothing ever sticks with them, which of course, is what we're trying to help you guys out with, with those other positions that we have. But these are the people that we have to target and focus on every, every day in the city. And when the citizens are seeing the violence go up, they want, they're not understanding how we're not having an impact on those, on those people. And we have to make sure that we're focused on those people and doing, and listen, let us know how we can help you to be focused on, on those people, people as well.
Just today, if I will, we had our, our monthly federal partners meeting where our US Attorney and all of our federal partners, the heads of all the federal agencies and the state's attorney's office, we meet in my office. And just today, we had that meeting to talk about the very same thing, the VROs, the ARIs, and how we collectively pool our resources together to, number one, identify the appropriate, listen, appropriate people, but then go after those bad actors who are committing violence in the community. On yesterday, we had our meeting with probation and parole to talk about the relationship there and how they are in all of our districts and the expanded use of their work and the expanded resources that they have given to us, and how we make sure we incorporate that as, in addition to talking about the methodology by which they decide, they declare people are at risk or high-risk or VROs, and how we do it to make sure our methodology is the same. So, we're talking about the same core group of individuals, and how we, with work of our detectives and patrol officers in districts, are targeting these bad actors when they commit crimes. And when they do, what do we collectively do about that and how that we make sure justice is served and those people are not out on the street to reoffend? So, those two things happened both yesterday and today to, to speak more to that point.
Thank you. And just a couple more questions, Mr. Chair. Also, as a follow-up from, from last month, I asked a question about how many cases we clear with the use of CCTV or LPR, and you guys said we don't track or can't provide that data. Can you explain, is that a technical issue and part of the technology upgrade that we need to be able to detect, or why don't we know? Because I would guess that if we solve a shooting or robbery using CCTV, that somewhere in the case notes, it exists that, hey, this subject was identified via CCTV, or if we pulled over a car because it was hit on the LPR, that we'd be able to say that this car was pulled over because of a LPR hit, the officer was given a description of the vehicle, and they got it. So, how are we not tracking that information?
So, from a data perspective, so, let's be clear, so the, the comments of it will be in the notes of the investigation. So, it has to be a data point that we isolate as we move forward. I know that Chief Davis spoke to the RMS going out for a bit. With that comes the working process. What do you need to capture? So, we may have it anecdotally in the notes of a case where LPR may have been involved, any CCTV, or any other cameras for that matter, but we need to isolate that as a data point. So, it's not that we don't capture, it's a, as a method of how can we extract that in a way that makes sense to be able to give it as a data point.
And thank you. And for the Deputy Chief, I think this is something that we probably should look at in stats as well.
Yes, definitely. I mean, that's, it's something that we track relatively regularly in police stat is kind of the, our progress in using these technologies. One thing that I think we've done in past budget years, and I would need to check, is also look within a certain perimeter of CCTV camera, our success rate in solving crimes within that area, so we can check in on that. I do also know, you know, as a part of the Bloomberg grant, you know, we do have some, some metrics that we report out on that. I'd be happy to pull what metrics we report to them on LPR use and on CCTV, and we can report that back to the committee.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, for another follow-up. So, we talked about the microzones at length, the next, last time, and wanted the information about the zones, the stats in the zones, and the buffer versus the rest of the city. So, your data shows what we would expect, that in the, in the microzones, homicides and shootings are down, you know, 9% or 13%, but in the 500 buffer, it's a 36% increase, and the rest of the city is flat. So, can we talk about what we're doing to deal with that displacement and how we're going to address that displacement to truly get to, to solving it and not just pushing it from one neighborhood to the next?
Absolutely.
Yeah, basically, what we've done is, if we, we're running into the same problem as we did when we started the VRI process. We pushed them basically out of the zones that we are in to the outskirts, and what the officers have to do is we just start adjusting our deployment as well, because the microzones require three 20-minute sessions, a shift. That still gives them six to seven hours that they can hit these other hotspots, because the microzones are not the only hotspots within their post. So, they're responsible for all those, and because they're concentrated in the microzones, it's going to create other hotspots on the perimeter of the zones, which then they have to, we have to move out there. And we can move resources, plus we have special operations sections where we see, if we see one zone spike a great deal, we can shift resources across the city and address any spikes real-time.
So, Colonel and Commissioner, so are we, knowing that we've seen that increase, are we tracking on a month-to-month or week-to-week basis how the crime is in the buffer zone versus that time period the year before? I would assume that this is something that you guys track and talk about and comment that, so that we can see, if we can start to, because for us, if we're able to see those numbers to see like, okay, they adjusted to the displacement in the buffer zone and made adjustments, and it went down, and the microzone stayed down and the rest of the city stayed flat, then that can, that to us signals that we're having the desired impact that we're making. In the same case for robberies, even though the robberies were only up, robberies in the buffer were up 11% versus 4% up in the microzone, then 3% in the rest of the city. I think that's the same thing, because we know, you know, we've had, what, like 384 robberies in the last 28 days, which is down significantly from the year before, but we still know, especially during the holiday time, this is something that everyone's going to be paying attention to. We need people to be safe, and we have to figure out what we're going to put in place to make sure that that's happening.
Yes, we've had, we've got the, especially as the holiday season comes on, we have the, the holiday deployment that will be going out next week. So, we'll hit some of those main corridors that we know are, are going to be highly traveled, so we have to put extra resources out there in addition to the officers that are doing the microzone checks, because we still, we don't want to lose any ground we, we made in the microzones, but we want to gain ground in the buffer zones.
And thank you. And Deputy Chief, the next question, I guess, is best suited for you, because we know we had a, a agency lead change, and we did, do not have a rep from the state's attorney's office. Do you know the status of, two things for you, do you know the status, status of the hiring of those analyst positions that we've been fighting for to analyze the conditions of the gun cases?
Yes, so, a candidate has been selected, and they're moving through the, the hiring process for that person, so that position is, is moving forward accordingly.
This one?
Yes, that is one position for the homicide and shooting and gun robbery review. So, that position is, is moving forward. Last week, we, I also met with the solicitor's office to finalize the data sharing agreement between the agencies, and that should be circulating to the state's attorney's office and to the BPD. If not this week, then Monday or Tuesday of next week.
Okay, thank you. And the, and the other thing, just really quickly that I'll mention is that, you know, we spoke about this, how important the MOCJ office is to me, so as quickly, as humanly as possible, as we can get someone in that seat, I think it's critical. We, we can't have that seat going vacant for long. It's too important for a city that's dealing with a violent crime crisis to not have that feet to seat field.
Absolutely. We, we are in complete agreement and, and are moving at all due haste to, to fill that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Commissioner, the last thing, what can the other agencies help you? How can they help you with displacement and the things that are happening in those areas? What can we get from our other agencies to assist you, especially with the microzones?
You're referring to city agencies?
Yes, city agencies. State ones too, but yeah, city agencies mainly.
Good question, and we talked about that with our federal partners today, about when we have police action and police enforcement in a particular area. And so, when we, when we remove a criminal enterprise from an area, how do we backfill with services so that others don't rise up and reclaim it? And so, we, we talked about that with our state and city, federal partners just today in probation and parole. So, we're working out a plan to deploy that, to tell you what that looks like from our perspective, but we will certainly, we certainly brought up the idea of housing issues and code enforcement issues and DPW, and how all of that works to clean up the area so that we come in with a sustained thing, not just a one-time offering of wraparound services, but rather a sustained effort to show that we have reclaimed this area and we're not turning it back over to the bad element we just removed. So, we'll be able to talk to you about that, but we're working, we'll have to work in, in collaboration to figure out how we can move city services and our nonprofit, a for-profit into an area once we remove a criminal enterprise from it.
Yep. Can you, do you have a timeline that you can provide for us?
We talked about that just today. I think that's a work in progress, and right now, as soon as, as soon as we can draft up a, a plan of what it looks like, we'll be more than happy to get some input, you know, early next week, get some input of what your thoughts may be, of the council thoughts, of how we can implement that and roll that out so that when we take out a group, what does that look like? We want wraparound services for the people, but we really want to be able to maintain the area so that we can keep the area sterile from drug dealers and our bad actors coming back into there all over again.
Thank you. And the last thing I'll say is, like I said to you last week, you know that I put out the applications for the Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety, and just to say that I look forward to working with you and our partners in the department and making sure that we have a committee that works to present a community interaction plan, because we know how important rebuilding a relationship between the police and the community is. I'm done for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the microzones for just a minute, following up on the line of questioning from Council President. So, when I, when I look at this, I guess, the data or the analysis, especially as it relates to homicide and shooting incidents, I kind of want to just hear a little bit more about how we intend to, with, with potentially limited resources, meaning manpower, how do we anticipate spreading the, the positive effects that are happening within the microzones? And then, if, and I, and I definitely wouldn't advocate this, but if I'm looking at the, from a statistical standpoint, is the data saying that the presence of the microzones and including the 500-foot buffer, the, the number of homicides and shootings that are happening in the combination of both, that we would have gotten the same results if we did nothing? Is that what the data is saying, or am I, am I misreading it?
I don't think we're saying that.
Okay, because I was just looking at where it says, that it looked like the WDQ value was, was saying program worse than doing nothing, but I'm, I'm not advocating, I'm just, I just want to make certain that I'm reading the, the data correctly.
We have a brilliant, really smart person that's going to come up and answer that.
Hi, how's everyone? Drew Vaught. So, kind of what you're looking at right now is a general comparison of this year versus the same time last year. So, when taking the look in kind of the marginal, in terms of the gains that we are having right now within the microzones, there's still a lot that needs to happen and occur beyond just the patrol strategy when we talk about how we better leverage LPRs, post-investigations, post-homicides and shootings, how we increase solvability factors for cases, and how we leverage other technologies in a more meaningful way. So, when we talk about the microzone strategy and the way we are deploying to that at a very foundational level, it's that and then some. So, when you're looking at just that data, it's a very small piece of everything else that needs to be factored in when we are deploying our resources at these very discreet locations. So, that report is a very, very preliminary kind of view in terms of like what the statistical trends are within the geography, and for issues systemically of homicides and shootings, it is going to take some time to gain a little bit better traction in terms of how we are addressing and mitigating these violent crimes, so...
But, but just, I'm not reading the data wrong. I mean, based upon what was given to me, the statistical data is, I mean, I'm just going by what I received. I'm not, it's saying that, you know, presently, the program is worse than doing nothing.
No. So, I hear what you're saying. What I think it fails into account, to take into account, is the gains that we have within those geographies, as Council President just alluded to just a little bit, just a moment ago. What we now have to understand is any dispersion of crime or criminal behavior that might go within the immediate geographies is something that we now need to make sure that we're adjusting to. So, I think that that report is a very preliminary report and only looks at things in a very preliminary basis.
So, can, and I'm not trying to, to make the data say what it's not saying, but I would, if, if what you're saying is true, then the report should reflect the good work that we're doing.
Absolutely.
Because anybody, anybody could get this report and then interpret that, you know, this plan that we've all agreed on... this plan that we've all agreed on and, and see some success isn't working in a way that it should be.
So, so Councilmember, one of the things that I'm aware of that particular report, and frankly, it, it got to you before it got to me.
Okay, okay.
And so I saw that exact thing that you're seeing. Uh, one thing I saw about that report was the duration of time that it's looking at to compare between this year and last year. The reality is our microzone strategy, while we began it in July, this is a paradigm shift for our department. It's taking several months for our officers to really kind of clue in. And again, that's what's happening now in ComStat. We're seeing an alignment of our commanders to be able to make sure there's accountability at all levels down. So when Drew is saying the report is very preliminary, it was in an effort to make sure we got you guys the information you were requesting. But the truth is, that particular duration of time, the January, the July to August period kind of shows and demonstrates that we're still trying to make sure in that period of time that folks are really getting it on the ground. And so we're now seeing, and we see this in our police that, um, on a bi-weekly basis, that in the last 28 days, we're seeing a lot of progress in the microzones, specifically when it comes to reductions in armed robberies. And so one of the things we want to be able to retool with this and get back with you on this is a greater data set, which if you have a limited data set, it's going to be able to be very difficult to interpret effectiveness of a program of this magnitude. It's a paradigm shift for our department. It's important for us to get as much data as possible. We're trying to be transparent about what we have. But the reality is, in, in the southwestern district where they actually do this very well, it took seven to eight months for it to really bake in well, to see an impact. So those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure, we want to be good, transparent about where we are. But when I saw that report go out, I, I wanted to make sure that we added the caveats about ensuring exactly what I'm talking about, is that whether or not the message is getting down to the ground level. So in the future reports that we give out, we want to make sure we're looking at the right, uh, duration of time. And one of the recommendations I'm making to Drew on that, that I made last week, was let's look at it from September 1 on and try to compare from there. Because by then, we would expect to make sure that everybody is at an accountability level that they're getting it. Does that make sense?
No, I, I, I definitely agree. And the reason I brought it up is because I, I don't, I don't want the, the interpretation to work against the, the plan that's been implemented and, and your efforts be derailed, you know, before they even get started. Uh, my, my second question was, and I'm not certain which slide this is, but, um, relates to year-to-date narcotics arrests. And, um, there just seems like there's such a, a variation from 2018 to 2019 and several of the districts as it relates to the numbers of arrests. Um, and I'm not saying that I expect, you know, that to be, you know, each district to be equivalent, but, but why, can, can somebody speak to why some districts, um, the numbers of arrests as it relates to narcotics are so much lower than previous years? You know, let's take example with the Eastern District, 576 total in 2018, but in 2019, 323 total. I mean, that just seems, um, absurdly a, a normal for it to be that, that few arrests, you know, over, um, a year or period of time.
You also have to, you have to realize that what we have is we have the marijuana arrests are down significantly. Um, because basically that's, they're, we still make them if they're distributing and we still make them, but the amount of arrests for, for marijuana is down. But the rest of the arrests should be relatively around the same for the heroin, cocaine.
So I, I thought I was, I was under the impression that arrests were still being made, um, the State's Attorney's Office just wasn't prosecuting.
By and large, for, for small, simple possession cases, the department's not making physical arrests, but rather issuing citations, but not making physical arrests. On cases of distribution or possession with intent to distribute, in those cases, the department is making, you know, the department is making arrests. But on simple possession and very small amounts, um, for a long time, even before my arrival, the department has, has a policy of issuing citations in lieu of arrests unless there's some other condition like being, a person is found to be in possession of a firearm while in possession of drugs or in the commission of another crime while carrying the gun.
But I, I didn't think that that was a new thing. I, I mean, I, I thought that even prior to the State's Attorney's position, that officers really weren't making, you know, minor arrests as it relates to marijuana.
They weren't, they weren't. That's, that's exactly what, that's exactly what we're saying.
Right, so I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm thinking that this decrease is, is not just reflected in marijuana arrests, that, 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 I mean, that there's something else going on. But I mean, I, you know.
It is a, it's a decrease in capacity. It's a decrease in, in work, work outputs and the, the amount of engagement that, that you've heard me talk about, that we're trying to equip with, with both confidence and competence in our officers to go out and reengage and to make sure that we're, we understand what it is we see when we see violations and how to appropriately take the appropriate action. And so there is some level of decrease in the capacity that we have through manpower, through skillsets. There has been some change over through promotions and newer people coming on. And so there's, there's always a capacity building issue even in all of the districts. But there is a, a difference between some of last year's outputs and this year's outputs.
Chairman, can I make, uh, ask another question that's slightly related, but just a little bit, a little bit off? Um, which, which makes me wonder, um, even as the, um, the policy rollout for the consent decree, that what was the, what was the reasoning why stop searches and arrest when part of the initial policy rollout as opposed to, you know, I guess the second phase? It, it seemed, I mean, once again, I'm, you're the professionals, but it just seemed like that would be one of the, the first things to roll out so, so that officers would know how to engage, you know, and, and properly, you know, how, how to arrest.
I, I, I understand your question, but the decision was made, I think, before I got here
Got you.
for what the first body of training would be and use of force was the biggest thing. And stop searches and arrests is to follow right behind it. And so we rolled out use of force training. But I'll, come on, come on up, please. Uh, use of force training, I believe, was the decision that was made. And it took a, a, a long time to move the entire department through the use of force training. Uh, because even if we got the stops right, if we're using inappropriate force, we want to make sure our officers were equipped with the best, the national best practice on how to be proportional, uh, reasonable and necessary when using the force. And yes, we got to get the stop searches and arrests.
And, and I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that necessarily. Um, I, I just, and, and maybe, maybe I'm, I'm the only one that's hearing this, but more often than not, from a community perspective, we're hearing from officers the uncertainty about how to make arrests and how to engage. And that, that's the reason why, um, you know, th- there's more illegal activity happening in, in the districts because officers have this notion of, I, I'm not certain even how to search. I'm not certain how to stop. I'm not certain how to arrest.
And I think internally, we're hearing that, we're hearing that also.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Shannon Sullivan. I'm the Director of the Consent Decree Implementation Unit. Um, I did want to address your question about how we prioritize the sections under the consent decree. So that's actually initially brought to, the priority is developed by the monitoring team. It is given to us, the Department of Justice, and we actually send it out publicly so that members of the department and members of the community can look at it and let us know if that's where we should be going. And so that was all done under the first year and the second year monitoring plan. We have developed the majority of the stop searches and arrests training to, uh, to, to get to the issue that you're referring to. That training right now is currently under development. We will have additional training on stop, stop searches and arrests also, um, with another set of policies coming up, but that'll be e-learning, is it prerequisite before they come in for 16 hours of, um, hands-on, adult-based scenario, uh, training on stop searches and arrests? And that will be delivered in 2020, early 2020. So, but that priority is, is, is set up by us, the monitoring team, the department, the community and members of the department.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the, the first would just be a data request. Um, I had an opportunity to, uh, as you know, visit the Real-Time Crime Center in, um, New Orleans. Um, and very much impressed, uh, what, what they've been able to do there. Uh, can anyone in your team speak to any, obviously you have, your roots are there, communication, uh, with NOPD on upgrading the city's, uh, our, our technology as it relates to the, the camera network? Um, but then I just had a sort of a data request around CityWatch-related arrests year-to-date. I don't, I didn't see it in the packet, obviously, I would have probably should have just sent that ahead of time because I knew I wanted to ask. But if you could just provide that at some point, just sort of where we are right now, baseline, but also, um, just expounding upon, uh, you know, the, the upgrades needed to get to where they are at, at NOPD.
I think the upgrades that you're talking about require, um, more of the newer generation high-definition cameras uh, that capture, uh, a wider range of visual, uh, rather than a narrow scope, but a wider range. And I think what you witnessed when you were there is a synchronized system where the CAD data, computer aid dispatch data was connected to the cameras and the call for service was connected to the cameras. The license plate readers were all connected. So when a call came out, it was connected to the cameras and populated the cameras to capture anything that would have passed in front of the cameras. And so it's a synchronized system that I think we need in addition to new and more cameras, a synchronized system. So when our shot-spotter data and our license plate reading, reader data and CAD data informs us of a crime, the cameras and license plate readers all become synchronized to capture people coming into and out of the area. So the investigator doesn't necessarily have to look for it, the system does it for them. And I think that's an upgrade that's, that's probably welcome and much needed.
So I, just to, to add to the Commissioner's point, we're currently exploring kind of what it would take to, to make those upgrades. Um, that's a high priority for Mayor Young. Um, that includes some potential software upgrades, uh, that, that could help us get there, you know, in, in bits and pieces, right? So getting to NOPD's model is going to take a lot of work, but there are things that we can do now and are working to do. Uh, one thing I do want to, to kind of talk about when we, when we talk about kind of camera expansion, um, as a reminder, the, the budget for the camera program, budget and oversight lives in the mayor's office and the mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, uh, and, and in my office as well. Um, the current budget for that program in terms of general funded dollars does not really, it, it is a maintenance program. However, that being said, we are always looking for partnerships, uh, public-private partnerships, grant programs, things like the U.S.E. Grant Program to expand the camera network um, and to expand and, expand in a meaningful and thoughtful way to ensure we're using high-quality cameras that get us the evidentiary support that we need moving forward. So, uh, while we don't have, you know, a ton of funds dedicated to, hey, we can throw up, you know, 50 new cameras, something that the CityWatch Committee works on every two weeks is identifying what are some of those public-private streams we can kind of pull together to do some thoughtful planning on that.
And, and again, sir, the, one of the initiatives in New Orleans that was, uh, being undertaken was the implementation of a way to get, uh, private cameras that directly interface with that Real-Time Crime Center that you, uh, were able to witness. Um, one of the biggest challenges, though, is the areas that can afford the cameras, fine. It's the areas or the neighborhoods that maybe cannot afford the cameras. That becomes a gap and that becomes an issue. And so one of the programs they were piloting, uh, was the Safe Cam Platinum Project, which would allow for, uh, communities or, or philanthropers to be able to provide an investment uh, in the areas that might need them the most, but may not have the resources to deploy those cameras themselves. That represents another longer-term project that we'd be interested, you know, provided we have the right way to connect in. And, and there's projects like Greenlight and things like that that happen in other cities that allow for that kind of public, public-private sharing of, of those data feeds that would only be accessible, you know, if it's, uh, authorized by that particular owner of that camera. But to provide the kind of additional capacity above and beyond what the city might be able to fund. And so there's opportunities there as well.
Follow-up on that. Um, so one of the things that I did see at their center was that, uh, a large number of the cameras are actually produced in-house, um, which I found to be incredibly impressive. And I, I would imagine the cost savings to them, uh, and they were able to, I think, produce around 40 or so a year, um, intern, in-house. Um, is that something that the department is looking at doing here?
That's a demonstration of the capacity that we would absolutely love to have. Um, again, we're, we're trying to strategize our IT needs from the bottom up.
Fair enough.
Um, but there, there is, of course, an opportunity there to just identify that as a, as a, uh, a way to save costs, way to replace cameras as they're, as they break, because we know that's an issue. And, you know, longer-term strategy, it is definitely something we want to, we want to, let's say, model after, slash, I want to steal other ideas. If that's, that's absolutely something we want to go and do, um, it just takes time, so.
But just that initiative was, was mainly funded by the state and not by the city. And so that's a, that's a, that's a major difference, that how they arrived at that through the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, but.
And has, has an ask been made to, uh, Governor Hogan and the General Assembly? Um, is that included in, in the ask that we've submitted locally here in Maryland?
Have we, have we?
Have you made this ask to fund this expansion?
We have, we have not made that particular ask. We've asked for a lot, but not specifically that particular one.
Okay. Just one quick thing before I turn it over. Um, can you, just a committee request, if we can get, uh, the, uh, a mapping or at least the numbers by area of the CityWatch cameras as well as how many community partners we have and in, and in what areas? Just so we can look at the geographical area?
Yes.
Just a map overlay of both, different colors.
Can you, can you put that, can you describe that in email for me so I can make sure I get exactly what your request is? So I'd know.
Just a map of, of the CityWatch cameras.
Okay.
And then an overlay of the community partnership ones that are also linked in. So we see how many community partners we have in each area.
Okay.
And where we have room for improvement.
Council President?
I have one more follow-up, not related to CityWatch. Okay, go ahead. Um, so, and this is just, I don't know if this is more appropriate for you, Deputy Chief of Staff or for the Commissioner, or maybe both. Uh, on the city's open Baltimore website, um, there's a Part One Crime Portal that allows you to look at crime data over time, um, which I just discovered today. Uh, very impressive. Um, but one, as I've been sort of looking year to year at different areas in my district, it's pretty clear that patterns are emerging, you know, especially if you look at street robberies, shootings. It appears that no matter what year I'm at, I'm seeing the same blocks over and over again. Um, how does that inform, these data points inform the work internally? But also, how does it inform, obviously, the VRI's are a space where there is inter-agency collaboration. Some of the areas I'm looking at aren't VRI zones. However, I'm very eager to start, get out on these blocks like tonight to figure out, okay, there, there has to be something emerging here if people keep getting robbed on these four areas that are right near the cemetery, right? Is this a lighting issue? Are there other things going on that make people more susceptible to these type of crimes? And I'll just stop there and, and let you respond.
Well, I think that was the, 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 the origin of VRI, but that's certainly the data points that we looked at that informed us about microzones, that not just one year, but multi-year, you can not look at the larger area, but you can consistently see year after year, two-by-two square blocks or small areas were consistently getting hit. And so that informed us about the microzone. And then it was what we wanted to do in the, in the form of a deployment strategy. How do we want the officers to go, how often and what we wanted them to do? And I think I'll let, I'll let Drew kind of, you know, take it from there a minute.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, yeah, yeah, so exactly kind of what you're seeing when you look at, you know, the different violent crimes, um, at very discreet locations, that's kind of exactly the origin, at at least a descriptive level of how we identified these areas. Some of the, um, some of the, the problem analyses that we're doing down at the district level is exactly what you're talking about, is looking at these underlying root causes of why crime is concentrated and stable and what kind of lends itself towards that kind of type of criminal environment and developing, uh, situational crime prevention mechanisms to be able to try and find sustainable approaches to crime. So.
Council President?
So, thank you, uh, thank you. And Commissioner, I guess this is, just to jump in here because this is going to be my next line of questioning just for a follow-up. For me, um, when we see this, and this is all over the city, right? If you take a map and look at homicides in Baltimore from 1993 or 2019, you really can't tell them apart. So if we know where things are going to happen almost, and sometimes they happen literally. are going to happen almost, and sometimes they happen literally the same month, the same week every year. And for me, what I'm interested in is how we're using that historical data, but also for after-action. Because what I've seen happening over the last couple of months is that we've had shootings and homicides, like, on blocks right next to each other, on top of each other. And I know in the past that there would, there would be so much after-action that we would try to disrupt what was happening there. Are we still doing that? And what else can we do? Like, what, what else needs to happen today, right now, from you guys' standpoint, to start to quell the violence in these neighborhoods? Like, what other tools do we need? What other enforcement do we need? What mechanisms, technology, what do we need right now? But I'm really interested in that after-action, because as the councilman said, when you're consistently seeing things happen on the same block over and over and over again, it becomes frustrating to us, let alone the people who are living there.
No, we, we share that frustration. And that was the conversation we had today with our federal partners of, what do we do immediately after a bad act or an enforcement action? Because we, we want to make sure we come in and not only provide services, but make sure we bring other city agencies in to provide some sustainable initiative that takes the place of what was happening before we went in with the police action or after a bad event where somebody's hurt or killed. Those are things we look at every single day. And in Comstat, we are deploying the same work. What is the after-action? What are the commanders doing? What is coming that's not here yet is what's called, it's in the plan, it's in my plan, it's called micro-community policing plans, where the commanders and the community come together to create the community policing strategy that's unique for that district. Because the community members know better than anybody what's happening and what's actually needed. So do the officers who work in those districts. And together, we can work on community policing needs. And I think that will inform us and that will create strategy about the community policing initiatives that puts officers there. But to put officers there, the thing we need right now is more officers, less work, more free time. Those are all the things we need right now, because we go in, but it's, it's almost not possible to stay there indefinitely, to ensure that the next thing that we talked about doesn't happen the next day or the next week. And so, that's the capacity that we're building to reduce the burden, increase the staffing, and create more free time. And then redeploy the free time back into community presence with high levels of presence that disrupts that, that bad act and those bad acts, and disperses and displaces those bad actors to somewhere else, and then ultimately captures them and holds them accountable. So, it's all of that at the same time. But then, working to make sure that when we catch them, they stay caught.
Mm-hmm.
And that they're held accountable. That's, that's the thing we're working on as well.
Thank you. So, and it goes back, that goes back to our early discussion about car reduction and burden. And again.
Yes.
Let us know, because it's for me, we would do it right now. Because to me, I want our patrol officers patrolling. I want them doing initiatives, robbery initiatives, walking around, knocking on doors, meeting people that just live in the neighborhood. That's what I want them doing, focusing on people and the geography we know things are happening. So, however we have to, whatever we have to do to ramp it that up, same thing for civilization and professionalization, whatever we have to do to ramp that up, we have to do it now, because I think that is how we're going to start to turn the tide, by having the time to, not just free time to do nothing, but free time to be focused in on the things that we want them to be focused on. Sorry, Deputy Chief.
And then one other thing with, with the, with the purchase of this records management system, that takes us out of a paper environment to a digital environment, with the new computers that will be in the new cars, that the, the day of having to return to a police station to do the police report and leaving the area vulnerable will be over, because the officers will be able to do their work from the mobile data terminal inside of the car, which enhances the amount of time we can stay in community. So, the faster we can build that, the faster we can build that capacity. That, that's already being built, it's underway.
Thank you.
I would just add, we're also in the process, in the city, of finalizing, and I guess, a post-shooting review, like, an immediate non-fatal shooting response protocol for, for our agents, or for our partners like ROKA and Safe Streets, and how are we kind of galvanizing these kind of critical partners to, to assist the police in the immediate aftermath of a non-fatal shooting. We're in the process of reviewing that protocol right now. I expect we could very, I not even expect, I will ensure, we're in a place at the next oversight hearing to brief the committee on that protocol and, and to talk a little bit more about what that looks like going forward.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sneed?
I just have a question. Are we keeping stats on how many cases are thrown out because the paperwork is not done correctly when we go to court? Do we know the exact number?
We do not know that exact number. And that is the precise purpose of the analyst being at the state's attorney's office, to track that on behalf of us, the state's attorney and the mayor's office, and this, and this body, in the city, so that we can all know, and then in a very transparent way, report that out. But that is, that's the exact reason why we put that in the plan and advocated for that so heartily. And now, happy to see that a person has been selected to hire to do that work and track it for us.
And so, then our officers will be trained to do the paperwork correctly and write so we won't, like?
Yes. It informs us of what, of why cases are refused in the very beginning, why cases will be either pled down to lesser offenses in court and are dismissed in court by a judge because of something we did or failed to do, or somebody else in the criminal justice process. And so, but it informs us so that we can create measures of accountability through training and or discipline to self-correct, to ensure that when we do make those cases, they make it through. And that's how we ensure that we're doing everything that we can do to ensure that our work makes it through the entire criminal justice process.
Yes. And again, the, we keep harping on the records management system. A digital system will help us dramatically, you know, reduce some of the human error that's involved with physically handwriting reports. That's certainly something that could be mitigated by a, by technology solution.
Yeah.
Though it doesn't completely go away.
Okay.
Plenty of people don't know how to type, and we have to make sure that they type well. But that is just something that, again, creates a better system of, or that reduces human error and reduces, like, illegibility becoming an issue.
That was something that recently happened in our neighborhood anyway, is that the person saw, the officer saw it, but the paperwork just wasn't written correctly. And so, it was thrown out. And the guy was back on the street within, like, two or three days. And so, it was like, what's the point here? We have the resident, the officer, they both seen it, they both did it. And I just want to, I hope we get that taken care of and...
That is a major point of concern for me and for all of us.
And so, I'm just curious, how, how soon can we get the technology feeding off of, was that a budget question?
We're currently in the, in the, more than the planning phase. You know, you, you hear us talk about the RMS system, and we're going through this process of assessing organizations that can provide that service. It, it's a process that we want to make sure we do it well, that we get the right partner to come in here to help us build the right system. And it's not something that we can turn around today or turn around tomorrow. So, it's, it's going to take us some time to get there. But I assure you that we're, we're diligently working towards managing it correctly, to make sure that we get the technology here as fast as possible. But it's the right technology, and it makes a difference immediately, as opposed to investing in a technology where, in the past, we've seen, you know, it sits around for a little while, and then we sort of toss it out because it's not being used.
I'm not being a pain in the butt. I'm just wondering, when, two years, two and a half years, three years?
We are already, yeah. We are already in the process of a data cleanup initiative, to clean up the data from multiple databases, so that when we acquire this technology, it at least can read all the, the current data that we have that, that sits in multiple databases. So, there are...
Our goal is a two-year, a two-year term. Okay? Between now and then, we want to make sure we get the right implementation strategy. We're trying to get it in as soon as possible. But when it comes to a quick deployment, it's also going to mean a cost issue, right? So, we're just trying to make sure that we're balancing all that. Our goal is to get in here within a two-year time period. But for us, we want to make sure, again, it's the right system. It's a multimillion-dollar investment. We do not want to get it wrong. And that means we need to slow down to go fast. We will.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, if you can comment on it, I just wanted to know, I guess, and it's still early, how, how is the task force with the DEA working as far as the, the inter-agency aspects of...
The inter-agency cooperation, in, in our opinion, is going very well. We met with all of our federal partners today. We meet every month, and we go over all of the cases that are working to make sure that there's deconfliction, that there's not duplicative work, and that we are singularly focused. And, and we participated in information sharing, and everybody carries their load. Then, we are all part of the National Public Safety Partnership, which is a new initiative that we, we became a member of this year, where we have weekly phone calls with all of our federal partners and even our site liaison, who is a former chief out of Florida, who is helping to coordinate all the enforcement efforts with all the federal agencies, the state's attorney, our department, and everybody who's performing law enforcement functions in the city. And so, that partnership is a great partnership. It's going well. We turn around a lot of cases, but those are long-term, usually mid-level and upper-level cases. And we take down entire criminal enterprises, not the one individual. And so, we talk about the speed in which those cases are turned around, just today, and how we tell the story. And, but those are things we're always working on. Those relationships are, wait, great, we have a number of officers that are actually assigned to the Drug Enforcement Agency. We have a number of officers assigned to ATF and the FBI and the US Marshals. And it's a collaborative effort to target the most violent gangs and the gangs who are causing, groups and individuals and gangs who are causing the most harm in this city. And we prioritize that work every single week, and we stick to that priority.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of you for joining us this evening. On behalf of the entire committee, we'd like to wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving. We're thankful for you guys and for what you guys do.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you.